Intro started. Standby for countdown. Thirty seconds. Twenty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
The Board of County Commissioners meeting for Sedgwick County for Wednesday, January 4th, 2023. This is our very first meeting of 2023. I want to welcome everyone in the audience today, all those that are joining us online and on KPTS. A couple things. First of all, I want to make sure that we recognize we have Brandon Johnson in the audience, elected city councilman from the city of Wichita. Levanta Williams is also here. She was previous city councilwoman. We've got John McIntosh. He was a city council person from the city of Derby. I want to welcome all of those electeds that are joining us today. We have a fairly short meeting, and really, the main purpose today is to recognize one of our commissioners, Commissioner Cruz, who will be departing the commission after this meeting. As a result, I want to make sure that we're able to recognize her accomplishments. So we're going to move public comments to the very end. It's a very short meeting anyway, so as a result, it's probably not going to delay for your public comments. But I want to make sure that we are able to recognize Commissioner Cruz. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order for January 4th, 2023. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
In vocation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs, Community Relation Specialist for the county. Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is once again providing a number of drop-off sites for Christmas tree recycling. After you've enjoyed your real Christmas tree this holiday season, take it to one of the many locations around Sedgwick County from now until January 20th. It will then be converted to mulch. While you're there, help yourself to some free mulch. I also wanted to share with you some national recognition that our Sedgwick County District Attorney's Office recently earned. Mark Bennett's Consumer Protection Unit was praised for its exemplary work prosecuting car dealerships that sell unsafe and defective or defective vehicles. In a press release put out last month, several leading consumer groups like the Safety Institute and the Center for Auto Safety feel prosecutors across the country give car dealers a lesser punishment for not meeting important safety standards. But in Sedgwick County, the DA holds them accountable. The press release highlighted settlements that not only won compensation for the victims, but also banned the alleged perpetrators from doing business in Kansas in the future. Congratulations to Mark Bennett and his team for the amazing work that they do. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, as I said, we're going to skip public agenda at this time. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes.
Commissioners, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Item A, special meeting minutes of November 21st, 2022. Commissioner Cruz was absent.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes of the special meeting. They were very short minutes for November 21st, 2022. Move to approve.
Second.
We have motion of a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Tanya Jacobucci from the Sedgwick County District Five Citizens Advisory Board.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, Deputy County Counselor. I think you can take items B and C together. They would be the resignation of Tanya Jacobucci and Janet Theo Harris from the District Five Citizens Advisory Board. The recommended action is to accept those resignations.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you to both of these folks. They have served for two years on this board, and they're very faithful, good members, added a lot to the board. I wanted to say I appreciate both of them. For various reasons, they can no longer serve. It was their choice to resign. But I wanted to say heartfelt thank you to their service for this community. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept resignations of Janet, I'm sorry, Tanya Jacobucci and Janet Theo Harris for items B and C.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, resolution of appointing Andrew Lee to the Sedgwick County Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman. This resolution would appoint Andrew Lee to the Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board, and is recommended by Commissioner Howell. The resolution is in order. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution, and I understand that Mr. Lee is also present to be sworn in. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With this appointment, I will still have two open positions, and I'm actively seeking someone with military background from McConnell Air Force Base, as well as someone in the college arena. But this is an important appointment. I know that many other cabs have dedicated a position to a high school student. We took a different direction. There's nothing in our bylaws or a resolution in our cab board that requires a high school student, but we're certainly welcome to have a high school student. So we've reached out to our high schools in District Five, and Andrew Lee this morning is here. He's a senior at Southeast High School. I graduated from Southeast High School, by the way. Thank you. Anyway, Andrew has a resume that would impress anybody. He plans on going to, I think, K-State University in August. But between now and August, he plans to serve in District Five Cab Board. And also, I think he's a perfect appointment to this board, so I want to say I appreciate him being willing to do that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. We would accept the appointment of Andrew Lee to the Cab Number Five Board.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have Kelly Arnold here to swear you in. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board. So help me God. I do. Congratulations.
Awesome. Well, I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioner Howell, and other honorable commissioners, for allowing me this opportunity to better serve my community. It's a great honor to be put in such a role, and I will do my best to represent youth voices in our district, as well as youth solutions. And this is only the beginning, and I hope to encourage and inspire my peers to be more involved in the public process, because I believe that it's important, as citizens in our community, to be more involved, to uphold the very fundamental values of our American democracy, to make sure that it thrives and prospers. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other thing I'd just say, when you go to Manhattan, if I remember correctly, you plan on doing public administration?
Yes, I probably side with my masters in public admin.
So I think Manager Stoltz, just be warned, he might be the manager after you. All right. Andrew Lee, thank you for stepping up. Appreciate you, sir.
Congratulations, Andrew. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman. And Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items E through S this morning. With the exception of K, we're going to pull that and defer for two weeks and let WAMPO take some action. I want to call attention to item F, which is our community programs, 2023 funding agreements. That's a, there's four agreements there within that item. The Arts Council, the Sedgwick County Fair, Sedgwick County Historical Museum, and TCAM are annual dispersments to them, which you voted on during the budget last year. That is item F, so just to call your attention to that, but ask for approval this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion just a second. But I just want to, if you'd allow one comment on item F, my only thought with there would be, I think we need to have a robust discussion in our retreat this year regarding long-term planning for these types of programs. I am concerned about our fiscal status at the county. I think we have some serious challenges coming up. I'm a little worried about it, and with that, I think we need to have a discussion about what is our long-term plan for this type of funding. It doesn't mean anything today. I certainly wholeheartedly support these today, and we'd be glad to vote for them. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda echo through Sierra minus Kilo.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I have a brief update this morning on legislative issues. I sent you, I think, a couple of weeks ago, the 2023 session planner. So as you're aware, January 9th, on Monday, legislative session will begin. And so I have sent our lobbyists, our legislative platforms, so they'll begin working that starting on Monday. And then also, we will have our regular meetings with Watkins Public Strategies. That's Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas. So we'll start that here next week with Jason and Jessica and the chairman and the pro tem. Also, just wanted to mention that our deputy county counselor, Justin Wagner, and CFO Lindsay Pauresso, they have been working on the bill that was similar to last year's HB 2676, which is the ability to create a fund for code enforcement, update language related to the use of the Equipment Reserve Fund for modern technology, and then also recently added the authorization for the creation of an opioid settlement fund. So we pass that on to Jason, who has placed that in the reviser's office, and so he's working on that. And then that bill will be introduced by the local government committees in both chambers. So I just wanted to mention that, that we've already got that working. So those are my updates this morning.
Good. Also, yesterday, our secretary sent out notice of two different events taking place in the near future up in Topeka, Local Government Day. And so I hope all the commissioners had an opportunity to see that email so that we can get signed up to go to Topeka to support those two events that are happening there.
Anything for me on legislative issues that I can work?
No, yesterday, we had luncheon with the Farm Bureau, and probably their biggest issue right now is water, and that's on our joint legislative agenda. The question was asked about marijuana, but they kind of deferred that. But that's a state issue, not our issue whatsoever, so I don't see us weighing in on that. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to make two comments. Number one, again, at the Farm Bureau lunch yesterday, where I was able to share some of our legislative platforms and the business card version of that. Got some great compliments, and I gave that to a number of legislators yesterday, explained it to them, and showed them the QR code, and we received, I think, quite a bit of appreciation for the strategy and how we did that. So the method is great. I think they appreciated that very much. But second of all, on the suspended driver's license issue, Senator Ali Kafasgadeau has already introduced the bill, and it sounds like it's going to be Senate Bill Number Two going into the 2023 session. So we already have a bill number for that one, and I'll lend in my support. Gave her some ideas for some amendments, and she's, I feel like we already have quite a bit of support to see some changes there. So I think that one's going to move forward this year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions on the legislative agenda? I don't see any. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Do any commissioners have anything for committee reports this morning? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Commissioners, anything for other? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one of the things, I want to circle back. I've been frustrated for about 25 years, been trying to donate blood. When I was in the Air Force, I donated blood every, every, every time I had an opportunity, five or six times a year, I would donate blood. And I did that for many, many years, until suddenly, the, there was a rule change that said if you had foreign travel, especially to the UK, for more than three months, that you would not be allowed to donate blood. So for 25 years, I've been writing letters to the Red Cross, trying to encourage them to reconsider that rule. And I was surprised to find out about a week ago, two, or about a week ago, that the Red Cross did, in fact, change the rule. So many people in the military who've spent time overseas, like myself and many others, have not been able to donate blood for a very long time. And so after 25 years of not being able to donate blood, I was able to donate blood a couple days ago, and I just loved it. It was wonderful. I have O negative blood. It was a great experience. I just wanted to encourage everyone to, if you have not been able to donate blood because of travel prohibition, that probably is no longer a restriction any longer, and I am excited to be able to be a donor once again. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that, because today at noon, over at Red Cross, we're going to reveal the winner of the Battle of the Badges. So everyone's welcome to go over to the Red Cross today, and I plan on being there. Anything else, end or other? Seeing nothing, we do not have a requirement for an executive session. Madam Clerk, please call the public comments.
Public agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, we did receive three comments by email last evening. Everyone's had an opportunity to review those. Move to receive and file. We have a motion of a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Okay. At this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Cruz join me at the podium, if you would. Thank you. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting today, that this is the very last meeting that we're going to have Commissioner Cruz as one of our members. I'm also very pleased that Bailey and Nova are joining us in the audience today. Commissioner Cruz is daughters, and one of them is a member of JROTC, and so congratulations on that, too. And we've embarrassed them, so. Being a county commissioner is a difficult job at the best. We're elected by a little over 100,000 people, but in reality, we report to a little over half a million people, because every vote that we take here in Sedgwick County really impacts the entire county, not just our district. So as you move through your term on a county commission, you have to be aware of an awful lot of issues, and everything that you vote for is going to impact the lives of people. Whenever I get asked, what do county commissioners do, it's difficult, because we've got 40-some departments. And so it would take me forever to describe what Sedgwick County does. And so my easy answer is, we take care of people, and that's our job. Over the past four years, Commissioner Cruz has served on the CJCC. She's served on TCAM Board. She's served on the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition. And she's done a great job on each one of those, and we appreciate her service to the community over the past four years. Our staff, we've got the greatest staff in the world, they built a book.
Yay.
For Commissioner Cruz. And it has pictures of a lot of things that Commissioner Cruz has done over the past four years. One other thing is, it's always a tradition to give all of our commissioners, as they leave the bench, a very nice gift. And this is the gift. Whoops, if I don't break it. And it says, "For your dedication and commitment to serving District Four and the people of Sedgwick County, Lacy Cruz, County Commissioner, District Four, January 14th, 2019 to January 8th, 2023." Congratulations, and I'll set this down over here. We'll get a picture taken with it first.
I feel like this could be used as a weapon.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Cruz, and after that, I'm going to open it up, public comments. So Commissioner Cruz, I'll give it to you. Do you want to stay here, or do you want to go back to the bench?
I'd like to go back to the bench.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if we could, Chairman, I wonder if we could have the public comment before.
We can do that.
Would that be okay? Okay. I'd like to do that.
We'll go through public comments. We have several people signed up on public comments. Our first one is Levanta Williams. Please state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Good morning. My name is Levanta Williams, L-A-V as in Victor, O-N-T-A, Williams, regular spelling. I come this morning to say thank you on so many ways. Thank you to all of the commissioners for your sentiments during my time of loss, especially my boy Pete, which is what Billy would be yelling. Also, thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for allowing me to be a part of the Department of Aging Board. That one is very close and personal for me, so I have appreciated that. And then I have a thank you from the Wichita NAACP, and it reads, "On behalf of the Wichita branch of the NAACP, we want to thank you for your service to the city of Wichita and to Sedgwick County in your role as county commissioner. From the beginning, you had a tenacity for effort, and you fueled the high level of energy that you used in pursuit of each issue that you worked on, on behalf of those that have been placed in office. You showed unique concern for those of you who represented and was willing to take on the most challenging issues on their behalf. Your work was filled with compassion and commitment, which showed your true concern for people, all people, and the issues that you advocated for on everyone's behalf. We felt your passion, and we appreciated your presence as you were truly a part of the community and understood the impact of issues that came before the commission. Through COVID-19 pandemic, budget management, changes in juvenile justice, voter rights, supporting all county employees, and representing those in need of a voice when they had no voice. You were there, and we appreciated you. You have the intestinal fortitude to confront any issue to ensure a positive outcome for those you represent. Your willingness to work as part of this commission with zeal and determination made our county government and our county a committed body that was concerned for the welfare of all people. In the final analysis, it can be said that your contribution to the county team brought heightened awareness and sensitivity to community issues. County government is supposed to respond to the needs of the people. Accountability at this level is needed and expected of county government. You reinforced this during your entire tenure. We thank you for this. We wish you the best of luck in your future, and we want you to know that you made a positive impact on the culture of the Wichita community, and you made a difference. May God continue to bless and keep you, because your job is not done yet. Submitted by the Wichita NAACP, Larry Burks as president. And I have a personal message for you, Commissioner. It's from "Stand" by Donnie McClurkin. And it says, "What do you do when you've done all you can, and it seems like it's never enough? What do you say when your friends walk away and you're all alone?" Tell me, Commissioner, what do you do when you're giving your all, and it seems like you can't make it through? Commissioner, I'm asking you to just stand. Stand proud. Stand and make sure that people understood that you gave all that you could. You gave your best. You hoped that you represented, and we know that you did. And so I've been in the position that you're in when it's time to leave, and that's exactly what I told my group. Stand tall. Stand proud. You gave all that you had. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Meitzner. Levanta, thanks for those great comments, and I appreciate. It's wonderful to see you still active in the community. Shocker games, various things. So I just want to say thank you. I know life after Billy has not been easy with your sons, but I appreciate our friendship and working with you together across the street, or wherever that was, when we spent those years together. And thank you for those wonderful comments. Appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you. And next, we have City Councilman Brandon Johnson. We all know you, but please state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Brandon Johnson, District One Councilmember. I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for being you. Thank you for being a wonderful partner. Thank you for listening. Thank you for taking your job seriously. There were so many people that felt unseen, felt unheard. You saw them. You heard them. You empowered them. They believe in government again because of the work that you did. Any issue that we ever had, you always picked up the phone. You always text me back. It didn't matter what time it was. It didn't matter how hard the issue was. You were there. I appreciate that. I know that the community appreciate that. You did a wonderful job. A wonderful job. Continue standing in the way that you did. You showed so much courage and valor in this position, and so many people now believe they can run for office because of you. So thank you for being you.
Thank you, Councilman. We appreciate it. Next speaker is Danielle Johnson. Please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Danielle Johnson. I think, because I'm getting older, I'm getting more emotional. So there's that. Commissioner Cruz, the one word that will continue to come up for your leadership, for me and many of the folks that are within my community, is proximity. And I believe that you have done your due diligence to get to know your county by standing alongside community members and knowing these community members. There are no shortage of stories and people that just know you, because you took the commissioner hat off and walked alongside family, friends. You made people really, truly at the center of your run and your service, and we're thankful for that. My hope is that other leaders see how entrenched you were into community and follow and do the same thing. I also understand and thank you and your daughters and your family for this sacrifice, because it is not easy to watch your family member be both loved and trolled at the same time. People don't understand the sacrifice, that you're a mom, you're a daughter, you're a sister, right? In real life, you're a real person, and your realities have played out in front of people. And I appreciate and thank you for taking those things on the head, right? It's hard. And I can only imagine what it's like to sit in that seat and make tough decisions that affect you, your family, your community, and have to deal with the complaints, the love, the uplift, all the things that you have to deal with. It takes a strong head and a strong heart, and you've had both. I also thank you for, I just love being able to watch you talk to women and tell them to run, right? You are someone that has stood up and said, "If you want to see change, serve. I'll appoint you. What do you need? How can I teach you? How can I show you? But if you want to make change, you need to sit in these seats." So thank you for sitting in that seat and inviting others that don't look like you into spaces to serve as well. You have done your job, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Holger Meyer. Please state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Holger Meyer. And wow.
And wow, it's hard to follow those three. I want to, you know, reiterate everything that you all have just said. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for your work. I think I've not followed the commission work too closely until you got elected because I didn't truly feel represented by the commission. That changed when you got elected because you were talking about environmental issues, about issues that are truly important and close to the heart of myself and many of those I interact with every day. And so the work you did to push environmental issues forward, I want to commend you for that and thank you for that in particular. You know, we all should care about the environment. That's where we live. So I hope that, you know, the future commission without you will honor you by prioritizing environmental issues. So when, for example, we hear news about the pipelines, the Keystone Pipeline here in Kansas, what are we doing in such a county to prevent something like that from happening right here in our county, in our backyard, literally in our backyard? So I feel like those issues are important, and I hope they continue to receive attention without you on the commission. Thank you, Lacy.
Next speaker, someone else we all know, is Joseph Shepherd. Welcome. Please state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and to each and every one of you who are serving. My name is Joseph Shepherd. I'm standing here today as a private citizen, so I'm removing a couple of hats just for the record. To stand and to be brave, to be compassionate, and to be heard. Commissioner Cruz, I stand before you today because for the last couple of years, I've been in your corner mainly behind the scenes, being a cheerleader, encouraging you to keep going, to stand strong, and to be the warrior that you've proven yourself to be. But today, I've decided to stand publicly the way that you have stood publicly for so many of us who are here today and those of us who could not be here today. For so many people in so many communities and so many leaders who have not felt seen or heard in the past, you made sure that you were intentional about your service, reaching out to those communities, being visible in those communities. I've seen you do work that you don't post about, that you don't tweet about, that you don't talk about, that you don't want the credit for because you're about the work. And oftentimes, when folks are in leadership positions, we can become so consumed with public perception and doing things because we don't want to rock the boat or make folks upset, but you truly led with your heart, which is a difficult thing to do. It's a difficult thing for each and every one of you to do. But you've lived that out, and it's really been inspirational to see a leader who not only is inspiring me, inspiring those of my generation, but my nieces, who are young girls, who was able to look and say, "I want to be like her because I know what it's like to be fearless and to be bold and what it means to be a woman." So thank you for your leadership. I've seen you as an artist. I've seen you as an elected official. I've seen you as a community leader. I've seen you as a friend, a community mobilizer. But I think the most important role that you have held is the role of mother. You've heard a couple of people already talk about it. Bailey and Nova are so blessed to have you in their life. I will never forget the moment you were elected. I will never forget the moment that you went through some challenging times. And at the center of your heart, when we were talking in private conversations or when I've heard you speaking in private, is creating a community in a county that works for not just your little girls, but every single other community member that is represented in this county. You've kept people at the core of your work. I also want to thank you for something that is not really recognized and celebrated in our world today, which we need more of, which is the peaceful transition of power. The fact that you were able to sit down with Commissioner-elect Beatty and say, "How do we continue to work to make our community better?" says everything that I need to know about you. Says everything that I need to know about Commissioner-elect Beatty. But that could not have happened without your willingness to say, "It's not about me. It's not about my wins. It's not about my loss. It's about community." So I hope for those who have the honor and the privilege to sit where you're sitting right now that they remember that, that it's about community. It's not about political allegiance, political affiliation. It's about working together to bridge the divide and to create a stronger community. Thank you for creating a stronger community, Commissioner.
Thank you, Joseph. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Dr. Gretchen Icke. Please state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Dr. Gretchen Icke. Lacy, I remember the first time that I met you, I was, you were running for office, and I was very unsure whether I wanted to support your candidacy. I felt that there should be a person of color, particularly an African-American person, representing your district or my district as well. And I was very hard on you. I really pushed you very hard. And I have been so proud of you all the way through these four years for everything that you have done. I mean, really, your service to this county and to your district and to the broader county, as so many people have said, has been just superb. You did get into the community. You did really listen to people. I don't have to repeat what other people have said about that. But I want to highlight some other things about you. I've worked with you on a couple of issues, probably three or four issues, but I remember being educated by you on the county budget and the surplus in the budget and how we need to rethink about the budget. And then I watched your final, one of your last votes, which was against the pay increases for the commissioners, and I agreed entirely with you on that vote. I think that $100,000 is quite a lot of money for when county employees are struggling. But I also really appreciated your role as an educator. I remember sitting in Valley Center and watching you at your budget hearings. You went all over, and you held hearings on the budget, and you listened to people, and you explained to people how the budget worked. You had enormous energy to just keep going into all kinds of venues all around the county. You are a very brilliant woman. You're a very passionate woman. You have incredible gifts of commitment to public service, and I know that you will not step away from public service. I mean, it's really, really important. The world needs you. Wichita needs you. Sedgwick County needs you, needs all that energy, all that intelligence, all that ability to do keen analytical work on the problems that face us. And so I say to you now, I just want you to continue, to not just, you know, take this change of plan as a sign of, you know, you're going down, maybe you were going a wrong direction. No, you were going a right direction. And please continue to do it and keep drawing on all those people that you have made friends of and have brought into your passion for making our community better. Thank you. And please inspire. I hope the rest of you will take inspiration from Lacy's work. She's been an incredible gift to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Our last speaker is Lawanda DeShazer. Please state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Lawanda DeShazer. So back in October, I wrote an editorial. So I'm going to read the editorial, and then I'm going to come from the heart, okay? So Commissioner Cruz secured bipartisan support for multiple projects, including $15 million for a comcare crisis facility, $450,000 for the relocation of the Kansas African-American museums, and that was during year one, secured $125,000 in funding for senior programs, senior citizens, and other priorities of the aging department, and secured a position for a LEAD for America Fellow, a position that focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Cruz led efforts working with Evergy to source 79% of the county's electrical consumption from a wind farm, which has saved taxpayers $126,000. Cruz championed efforts to ensure all at-large commission appointments go through a process that promotes transparency and fairness for all citizens. Cruz was the only commissioner to demand an external investigation after the death of Cedric Lofton, a 17-year-old that died in Sedgwick County custody, and she continued to call for that investigation. She expounded on the need for county specialty courts, which now includes a veterans court and a mental health court. During the redistricting process, she championed a bipartisan effort to ensure that communities of interest remained intact, which promotes communities from dilution of their voting power. Because of those things, I've always stood by Commissioner Cruz. And from a personal perspective, I met you during, I believe, the first Women's March. And I was like, "Who is that woman?" And so I was so impressed with you, and you don't know this, that we had an MLK celebration at McAdams Park, and I was the one that suggested that we invite you to that event. You didn't know that. And so following that, when you decided to run for office, I too had concerns, like who should be representing the district I live in? I too felt that it should have been someone that looked like me, you know? But they say it's what, cream rises to the top? Is that how the saying goes? You've proven yourself to be worthy to hold that position, and I appreciate the work that you did. I appreciate the lens you put on those that were unseen and unheard. I've worked for Sedgwick County for 32 years, and I know that there are some gaps in services. I know that not everyone feels representative. And you, in that position, you were able to, again, put that lens on the unheard and the unseen, and I appreciate that. When we lost Cedric Lofton, that hurt the community. That hurt our city. It was a blemish on us. And you stood firm that we got to do better. You stood firm in that, and I appreciate that. You stood firm on the fact that everyone deserves to be heard, seen, and valued. Some of the community members felt that CJ was not seen or heard or valued. Thank you for seeing him, and again, thank you for championing that fight. As we move forward, I hope to see you still fighting a good fight. I hope to still be able to work with you. I have some projects, and I'm going to get with you later because our youth are still at the forefront of needing to be seen and to be heard, and I know you will be a great voice for that. So again, thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you for stepping up for those that didn't have a voice. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Let me make a motion real quick to receive and file, and then we'll turn it over to you. I move the receive and file public comments. We have a motion in the second inning discussion. See none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And now we'll turn it over to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Wow. I am very humbled by your words today, and I'm going to cry during this. So thank you, Carol, for the, you know, I sort of have to use toilet paper. And I won't try to talk all day because I know you all don't want to hear me talk all day, but I got some things to say, so I'm going to say them. And I didn't intentionally leave anyone out. Four years of service is a lot to capture in a short speech. So if I have excluded someone, it is not on purpose. This is a lot for my ADHD brain to kind of tackle into one little speech. And so I want to first just acknowledge that I'm a human, and I make mistakes. So if I forget somebody, I will make sure to go to my Facebook page and reconcile that. But representing 105,000 people, nearly 105,000 people, and the interest of constituents by advocating for their needs and concerns is a huge job. Ensuring that your government is transparent and accountable to its constituents is a huge job. Working to implement policies that benefit the community as a whole is a big job. Engaging the community and listening to their feedback, when sometimes it is not fun, it is a big job. It is a taxing job. I did my best to do all of that. I did my best to set a good example, living under a microscope, and at times I failed. When I decided to run for office in 2018, it was because of music that led me here. I'm a musician, and I've never stopped being a musician, but I've put it on hold because of other priorities. I was the underdog. Nobody thought I was going to win. I literally put all of my eggs in one basket. I quit my job in September to run for this role. I knocked nearly 3,000 doors, and that's insane. I lost about 20 pounds, which was great. So if you want to go on a weight loss plan, your New Year's resolution is to run for office and knock doors. I was elected by nearly, by a pretty good margin, I will say. And I was shocked. I think this whole community was shocked. So in 2019, when I took office, I was the shiny new penny. A lot of people wanted my time. A lot of people wanted to influence me and my decisions, and they did just that. I had a pretty large set of rose-colored glasses that I looked at the community, and I gave everyone the opportunity. In 2020, I was elected vice chair, and I wish I would have had the kind of power throughout my term that people perceived that I had during the pandemic. In March of 2020, we were all scared. We were anxious. Nobody knew what was going to happen. And at those times, we naturally looked toward people in leadership to guide us through those times. And at the beginning of the global pandemic, that was certainly no exception. The problem with the unknown is that it allows an opportunity for fear and misinformation and false leadership to gain a foothold. We saw plenty of examples during the long pandemic. And we saw nationally that our leaders couldn't agree on a strategy, and locally, we were kind of waffling on inaction, and that was not acceptable to me. I understood the gravity of this situation. I knew without drastic action and some collective sacrifice, which was difficult, thousands in this community could and would die. Yeah, I said it. Might seem dramatic, but we lost a lot of people during that time. Incredibly tough choices had to be made, choices that might mean the loss of a job to someone, the loss of a gig to my fellow musicians, or the financial hardship of a business that depends on customers walking through their front door. Tough things had to be done, but weighed against the death of a single member of this community, those were decisions that had to be made, and I made those tough decisions because they were the right ones to do. And people in this community let me carry the burden of the anger of those who disagreed. I endured verbal attacks and threats most of you have never heard because I've never talked about them. Yet each day, I got up and did what I had to do for the entirety of this community, knowing that it was going to be something that could potentially, I could lose my election for. That never occurred to me because at the time, it was the right thing to do. In 2021, I was elected vice chair again, and we had to talk about testing and vaccinations, and we fought about where those testing sites to be, should be. And I fought for those communities most impacted, those communities of color that needed those opportunities more than any other community. 2022, here we go, reelection time. And this is when I felt the shift of the way this community treated me. It was interesting to see how going into an election year, there was a possibility that someone else could take my seat. There was a possibility that someone else could be more amicable, could be nice and get along. And it was incredibly crazy to feel the shift of how people in this community treated me. It was like they didn't need to be fake anymore. It was like they just turned vile. But I'm not going to focus on the rabbit hole of hell that I went down. I'm going to focus on what was accomplished and the things that could still be accomplished. I'm going to thank the people who blessed me with grace, understanding, and an incredible amount of kindness. So first, let's talk about some of the things that we accomplished. And thank you, Lawanda, for sharing some of that. We secured the energy audit, $250,000 for that. No one was talking about the environment before I came here. And the word sustainability was kind of a curse word. But I was happy. But I was happy to get that conversation started, because I think it's important that we take care of the place in which we live. We secured $125,000 for seniors, which I spent the majority of my private career caring for seniors, understanding the needs of those who have built this community. We also secured a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. We added that to the staffing table. I'm excited about the possibility, and actually, the, the move that TCAM will make to the new building, and I'm so excited to be still serving on that board in the coming years, because what an exciting accomplishment to have a museum placed in a very, in a great location that is visible and outside of the shadow of the jail. But what will happen to Calvary Baptist Church? And what will happen to the historical, one of only, one of two buildings left remaining that is symbols of original architecture and home to the African-American community? Could that space be turned into what it was originally designed for, which is community connection, which is a place of healing? Now unfortunately, this location is surrounded by our Sedgwick County Jail. But what we have to understand, and what the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition is doing, and our, and our other mental health providers, and our addiction counselors, what we're talking about is rehabilitation rather than locking people up, understanding that people do better when they are cared for rather than punished. So could this location turn into a place that is a place, when people leave the jail, that they have a secured location for food, housing, and shelter, addiction recovery efforts, anything that you can think of that will help people get back to life? We talked about the studios. During the pandemic, we had $200 million come to this community, and we were able, this commission was able to help the city by offering two extra million dollars so that we could secure the 316 Hotel and turn it into 54 permanent supportive residences for people that are coming out of homelessness, for people who need a place to lay their head at night and a shower to take in the morning so that they can go to that job interview so that they can get their life back on track. That's 54 apartments, but think about how many people are still sleeping on the streets. We have the money here in this community. We need to encourage responsible incentives for development of more permanent supportive housing units, because those housing units have a 90% success rate. That's unheard of. Why aren't we doing more of that? Our Veterans Court is coming online. We're still working on a mental health court. We need a domestic violence court. We need to grow the Grow Your Own programs, like EMS and the, the Calm Care Program for more social workers. The opioid money that was discussed today, let's bring in people like Lisa Veda and Safe Streets that are already working on these kinds of things to understand how we can get Narcan in the hands of people, how we can really help people who are suffering from addiction and mental illness. But let me remind you that the majority of people who are suffering from mental illness and addiction are housed. The number one problem for homelessness is lack of affordable housing. We have to do better with that. Now, for the past couple of years, I've been working on a mural in the jail. We got Brick Mob on board, and I've been told that the jail mural has now kind of stopped because they don't see the value and why we would do it. Now let me, let me tell you something. Beige walls, cinder block walls, how does that help people? When we talk about nature scenes, when we talk about incorporating nature into places that normally wouldn't have it, we reduce anxiety, violence, we reduce depression. Let's work on that mural in the jail. It was $4,000. Why have we stopped that? Let's continue that. Let's make it a wayfinding in the jail. I'll tell you a little story. When, when I went to go look at where this mural would be placed, it was strategically placed right across from the health center in the jail. Now, the deputy who was taking me to go see where this location was at was not very happy with me, because I kind of got caught up in the reverence of TCAM, and I was a little bit late, so I understand he was a little upset. But he had talked to me about working at the jail for 20 years. It was a Friday afternoon, and maybe those, all of those things wrapped into one, he just wasn't very happy. But then, when we got to the place across from the health center in the jail where the mural was be, I just simply turned to him and said, what do you want to see on the wall? Because art and color and nature scenes don't just help inmates, they help the deputies who work there as well. His demeanor immediately changed. He wasn't upset really anymore. He thought, wow, somebody asked me, what do I want to see on this wall? It's amazing what a little bit of color will do for someone's attitude. Now, talking about the jail and talking about TCAM, what happens if we fence in and make TCAM a part of the jail? What, what happens if we utilize the north corner of the jail to build, I don't know, a garden, a community garden, and teach inmates how to grow their own food, sell that food to local restaurants, create a source of income, create a revenue stream, create a way for inmates to not only serve their time, but to learn a skill? In addition to learning a skill as far as making food and growing and cultivating food, let's bring back music. We used to have a choir in the jail. Let's bring back those healing things that we can talk, that will help people, those restorative-type practices. And let's talk about equity for a second. In this community, and in this county, we have a spreadsheet that tells us how roads and bridges, how old they are. When was the last time they were maintained? When was the last time they, you know, were built? It's on a calendar cycle. We understand that if we build a bridge today, it's gonna be good for 50 to 70 years. We're not really gonna need to do much to it. Why can't we take that same mentality of roads and bridges and translate that into communities? Why aren't we investing in communities? Let's take the worst community, rate every single community in this county on a scale of one to 10, and let's figure out who might need the most help. We have to create an innovation officer for this county, add to our staffing table. What is that going to do? We are lagging behind, y'all. This county, the second-largest county in Kansas, is lagging behind. Did we see the Douglas County article that came out about how they are getting people out of their jail? Let's think about and have a whole, whole position designed and strictly focused on Now let's talk about racism, and I understand, I don't, I grew up in a racist home. I had to unlearn my racism. I had to unlearn the things in this, in, that, in my life, and I had to do it on my own. I couldn't expect anyone else to help me understand how I walk through this world, the privilege as a white woman. Now, privilege doesn't mean that I'm rich, right? It means that when I send my daughters out into the world, if they get pulled over, they're not going to be harassed by police. It means that as a white woman, I'm walking through the grocery store, and I'm not followed because someone's going to think I'm stealing stuff. It's important to understand our own racism, and it's important to understand that it is our responsibility as people in this community, we have to unlearn it. Now, as a young woman, and I'm still calling myself young, even though I'm 40, so, the misogyny that I have felt and the sexism and the sexual harassment that takes place in this organization and in this community has got to be stopped. It is important that we tackle those kinds of things. Talk about ableism. I just recently figured out that I am neurodivergent. I have ADHD. I am, and I, I think about my life, and I think about how I walk through the world and the things that trigger me and the things that allow me to see the world in a different way. My brain is pretty powerful, in the sense that I can take large sums of information and digest them and make decisions quickly. That's a superpower of mine. How many other people in our county have the same thing? How are we honing their skills? How are we helping them walk through the world and, and, and care for the citizens of this county? Let's talk about homophobia, transphobia, and how are we going to figure that out? How are we going to make sure that everybody feels accepted? So, I'd like to just make some special thanks to the citizens of this county. Thank you for believing in me. Thank you for allowing me to hear your deepest, darkest days of your life. I remember a woman who was being evicted from her house. Her house was being sold in a foreclosure sale, and helping her find a place to live was very meaningful, and it, and it goes to show you the type of work that, that we do. This is very difficult stuff. We are hearing people's deepest, darkest, most terrifying moments of their lives. Think about our EMS folks, when they run in and run toward all of the tragedies of our, of our county. Now, I'm not an EMS professional. I am not a firefighter, but being able to make sure that they have what they need, fighting for them, was an absolute privilege and honor. I'm so glad that I was able to be approachable enough for this community to come and share those things with me. I will forever be grateful to those in this community who trusted me and allowed me into their life, allowed me to lead in a way that I only knew how, and that was with my heart and soul. I want to remind this community that elected officials work for you. I have never forgotten that. I have 105, 105,000 bosses, and most of the time, it seems like people from every single district reached out to me. Imagine if 530,000 people in this county came together to end homelessness, homelessness. I see you, Dawn. Imagine if even one district came together of 105,000 people and demanded a new and improved recovery system from those suffering from addiction. The power is in the people. The power is not up here. The power is in the people. The people are the boss of these people up here. Remind them of that. Help them remember that they work for you. You don't work for them. Imagine if this community came together to do any number of things. Remember August 2nd? What did we do? We told this community in this state that we were not going to have anybody tell us what to do over our bodies. That is a prime example of what happens when people collectively come together to share exactly what they want to see done. Now, I, I really want to thank some folks. My team, Rhonda Cox, Shannon Boone, Janelle Bogart, Jordan Walker, Joseph Shepherd, who told me to get myself together. Jason Opat, a person who's been with me the longest, really, during this campaign. He is, I called him at all hours of the night, saying the craziest ideas, and he would always tell me no, and I would always just do it anyway. And, but he was the guy who told me to chill out, and I appreciate you. I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your loyalty. I appreciate you as a human being, as a guy who gives every single thing to everyone else. You are a good human, and I'm so thankful to know you. To Diane Britton and Jamie Timmish, those were the folks that helped me on my team. Danielle Johnson, Brandon Johnson, you guys have, you're always checking on me. How you doing? How you doing? I'm like, I'm not very good. I just really thank you so much for being there for me in ways that other people weren't. It was, it was a lot, and you, you for sure know exactly what I'm talking about. To the women who ran for office, Renee Duxler, Kelly Grant, Kelly Reed, Charity Kennedy, Brooke Chong, Callie Barnett, Laura Lombard, Gina Repass, and so many other women who put their neck out to run for office. It was an incredible show of tenacity and endurance. To the recovery community, to the mental health community, to Safe Streets, to the Hot Team, to all those boots-on-the-ground folks who are doing the real work of seeing people and transporting people and helping people in their deepest, darkest nights. To Mama Wakila, who's not here today, but she has been an incredible woman, and I appreciate her. Lavonta Williams, wow, just seeing how you're still engaged. And when I, when I, in 2018, when I introduced you at the Women's March, you and, and one other person, when I was reading your biography, because I spent a lot of time, like, I didn't really know you at the time, but just understanding 30-plus years of public service, it's inspiring to see, knowing how deeply taxing this is on your body, your mind, and your soul, that you're able to stay in this for so long, continuing to do what you do. Like, that in itself is, I don't even know how you do it. Four years almost took me out. Pastor Pam at St. Paul, Alma Broadfoot, Marjorie Wright, Denise Sherman, Mary Dean, as, as tenacious and wonderful as she is, I am, I'm very thankful. Karen Casey, for her daily updates on my Facebook Messenger. She always sent me something really nice. Akeem Ashford, my Jewish mama Jill Docking, Anne Garvey, Jane Barnes, Marquita Atkins-Woods. Thank you for doing all you do. Destination Innovation, Progeny, I mean, y'all are doing the work. You're building the next generation of, of people, and I look forward to joining your efforts. Dr. Michelle Vaughn, thank you for being here today. I am really looking forward to one of them speakers sessions. I was bummed I couldn't see that last one. Sarah Yost, Kent Williams, John Gregory, Lisa Veda, Lynn Rogers, Stan Reeser. There are so many people that I am probably leaving out, but I am so thankful for each one of them. Lisa and Carol, what can I say about you two? Like, you two, from the moment I stepped through the door, you just kind of swooped in. You are the most professional people I have ever met. You are kind, you are considerate, and I hope to be as professional as you someday. I hope to be as determined to do the right thing all the time. You guys have kept me in line. You have helped me learn the ropes around here. I'm so thankful for you. I can't thank you enough. To Gary Green, the person, who knew that almost a decade ago, when we met at Denim and Diamonds, that you'd be in this room with me today? Who knew that the crazy trolls would label you my political boyfriend? And I'd be thanking you for your loyalty. I'll be thanking you for that for the rest of my life. You were the person who saw me through the deepest, darkest times, and I can't thank you enough. You're the person who kept me alive during all of this. This is no joke, when you run for office as a young Democrat in a red state where a lot of people want to see you gone. You were the one who- You were the one who helped me. So thank you so much. And finally, to my beautiful daughters, Bailey and Nova Cruz, thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your enduring the past four years with me. You didn't ask for any of this. You didn't ask for any of it. Yet you were so understanding and patient through it all. If I could go back and change anything about the last four years, it would be the time I lost with you. The time I drank my pain away instead of pouring myself into you. The times I spent, I slept for an entire day because I was too tired to place my feet on the floor. I'm so sorry I wasn't better at handling the stress of this very public position. And I'm so sorry for the time that we lost. This message, and the reason I wanted you both here today, was to make you both the promise that as your mother, I'm so proud of the young women that you have become. My entire life, I wanted a good mother-daughter relationship. Only I didn't expect that I would be the mother and you two would be the daughters. Because what we are doing and what we have struggled through is to break those generational curses that have affected our family for a very long time. No, our relationship is not perfect. We know that. Yes, there are times when we need breaks from each other, but what I want to say to you is that we have built something to be very proud of. And that you no longer will need to wait to have access to me. The two of you are remarkable humans. You're both kind. Oh my God, you're so kind and caring and empathetic and creative and compassionate. But the one thing I love about the both of you is that when I'm not around, when I'm around, I'm leading and doing everything, and you guys just let me do it. But when I'm not around, when I've seen you with your friends and your peer groups, you two are the leaders. You're the ones who make things happen. You're the ones who people look up to in your friend groups. And I'm so proud of you. On that, on the bathroom, the little chalkboard, it said, "You are a leader," and you truly So you both are going to do incredible things in your life, and my promise to you is that I will not miss another moment. Thank you for your love. Thank you for your support through all of this. It's not been easy, but we have learned a lot and are better people because of this experience. I look forward to being a sober mom, because that's what you deserve. Now, remember, don't let anyone ever dim your light. This world will do it if you let them. If you want to go after something, do it. I will be right there for you every step of the way. I love you, Bailey. I love you, Nova. Thank you for being here today. Now, let me share. I'm almost done, y'all. I'm almost done. I want to share a few lessons that I've learned to close out this chapter of my life. Don't forget about the supporters when all of the naysayers are loud, because it's easy to forget. Remember that the supporters are there even when they're quiet. Speak up when you have something to say. Don't be afraid to be heard to make your voice count. Ask questions and be curious. Ask why as many times as you need to. If you feel like you're being ignored or talked over, don't be afraid to interject. Always challenge the status quo. Be confident in your point of view and trust yourself. Don't let anyone silence you. Recognize your own worth and your value. Educate yourself. Knowledge is power. Take the time to understand our history, our history of racism, misogyny, sexism, trauma, addiction, mental illness, homelessness. How did those things come to be? Speak out in multiple ways. Speak out through art, through songs, writing, conversations, protests. One point I want to make is that the only community that was protesting this whole entire time, this whole four years, was the black community. Did we ever see a white organization or any other color have as many protests and press conferences as the black community is still having today? There was just one yesterday or this week. Can we get to a point where we're not having to have those anymore? Take small steps. Don't feel like you need to tackle the entire issue all at once. This is a marathon. I like to say, "I might not see the fruits of my labor, but my labor will be fruitful." You can quote me on that. Now, I want to talk specifically to women. Take the opportunity to mentor and encourage other women. Offer guidance and resources to help them reach their goals. Celebrate the success of women. Acknowledgement, acknowledge their achievements, recognize their achievements. Speak their name. Amplify their name. Amplify their voice. Do your part to spread the word. And if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. Keep your mouth shut. There is enough forces working against women in this world, and we don't need other women perpetuating it. Offer emotional support. Create a safe space for women to share their challenges and celebrate each wins. Create an environment inclusive, of inclusivity. Ensure all women feel respected. Stop the jealousy and competition. And men, stop putting and pitting each other, pitting women against each other. Her success is not your failure. Her success is your success. Their success is your inspiration. We cannot allow people to pull us into this ugliness. I got pulled in. I got pulled into the ugliness, and I'm sorry for that. I'm sorry to the citizens of District Four for getting sucked in to the bullshit of politics. When I'm gone, when there is no more Lacey Cruz to belittle, I will be, it will be someone else that the mob will unite around to hate and bully and harass. It's gross, and it's sad, and it doesn't have to be this way. It doesn't have to be rose petals and ice cream, but it doesn't have to get to the point where the entire government puts their weight to create a villain that isn't there. It doesn't have to be like that. So what's next for me? I'm going to rest. I'm going to heal from this trauma. I'm going to finally lift this weight of, of this role off my shoulders. It's been a long two months. Think about in November, I'd have still had to keep up with this for two more months. That's, that was a lot to, to keep going. But I want to share that I've learned more about myself than I ever thought I would, and I won't tolerate any of this stuff anymore. I learned that I didn't have to fall for the false niceties. I'm never going to toe that line. And I didn't, and I won't. And I stuck to what I set out to do, which was two things. One, do the right thing no matter the personal consequence. I did that. And two, inspire women to run for office. So what will I do? I'm going to continue to support organizations like the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. I will be serving on the Executive Committee of the Continuum of Care, working on homelessness, addiction, and mental health. I'm going to play my first show at the Artichoke on January 27th, so please come out and join. I will be an instructor at the House of Rock for Youth. Our first show is going to be talking about, are we going to be doing the indie, indie rock songs? And I've joined the Phoenix, the Sober Gym, which I will be hosting an open mic in the 1st of February. So finally, thank you for allowing me to share the last words that I'll ever share up here. I wanted to, Marjorie Wright gave me this when I started as a gift, and it's Eleanor Roosevelt. And I'm going to read you her quote. Sorry that, sorry. You can see it, too. She says, this is from 1952, and it's sad because it still, it still rings true today. "I believe we will have a better government in our countries when men and women discuss public issues together and make their decisions on the basis of their differing areas of experience and their common concern for the welfare of their families and their world. Too often, the great decisions are originated in given form in bodies made up wholly of men, or so completely dominated by them that whatever the special value women have to offer is, is shunned aside without expression." I wish that we would all understand that we come from different places. We bring different things to the table, and when we value our differences, that's how we create real change. So I know that's been a really long speech, and I just can't thank this community enough. I can't thank the county employees enough for sharing their lives with each and every single person, for their dedication to serving the citizens of this county. So with that, I would just like to say thank you. Thank you for teaching me all these lessons. I have learned some valuable ones, and I will take them into the rest of my life. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. I appreciate it. And four years ago, I did not know Commissioner Cruz. We got to know each other a little bit over the years. You can just sit here and look at the two of us, and, and we're probably at the opposite end of the spectrum in a lot of ways. But how did I get to know her? First of all, we went through Fire Ops 1. That's one of the toughest things you can do. It's, you spend all day carrying around all the equipment that a firefighter carries around. And I got to see her going into a burning facility, performing CPR, cutting apart a vehicle, seeing how tough she was in Fire Ops Number One. Another thing that we did as a team is that, and remember, after I retired from the Air Force, I was a school teacher, and I appreciate every single school teacher. But the teachers over in Goddard would invite Commissioner Cruz and I to speak to their classes as a team, because actually, we are kind of opposite in a lot of ways. But as we spoke to the, to the students, and I truly love all of our students, what you learn is that even though that we come from different backgrounds and do things differently in a lot of respects, the things that, that we do for the community, and this body of five board members, and that anything that we do takes at least three of us to do it, we all are looking for a common goal to do what's best for the community. And that's what we portrayed when we spoke to those students each and every time that we did that as a team. One of the things that I saw when she first got elected, she drove a big, huge SUV. And I'm a gearhead. I love cars. And the first thing I saw was she needed brakes. I mean, she has her two daughters with her.
I need brakes again, actually.
I said, "Bring the car over." And so I changed all four of her brakes for her to make sure that her daughters and, and Commissioner Cruz were safe. And now today, she drives the coolest car in the world. She drives a little, what the heck is that?
I don't drive a Mini Cooper.
She drives a cool little Mini Cooper. So I get to know her better that way. We went to NACO in Washington DC. And the highlight really for me was General Colin Powell came in and spoke to us in person before his death. And he's one of my personal heroes. And we got to see that. And Commissioner Cruz and I went over to the British Embassy. They had a reception for us at the British Embassy. And that was really another highlight of going to DC. We went down to San Antonio to see what was happening in San Antonio for the mental health. And mental health, substance abuse is something that's been at the top of my agenda ever since I was on the commission. Commissioner Cruz carried that forward as we moved. And we still have an issue. We need, we need San Antonio and a smaller version here in Sedgway County. And I don't want to lose the momentum that Commissioner Cruz has, has helped us get to this point. And I think that a lot of things are coming together at one time when, when we can start working some of these issues a little better. We went through COVID together. Have you ever got a thousand emails a day? We were getting a thousand emails a day. Half of those hated everything that we did. Didn't even believe we should be alive in some cases. And you read emails like this each and every day during COVID. Luckily, the other half believed that we were doing the right thing. And we go into COVID, and there's no map on how to get through COVID. Nobody had ever done it before. We made mistakes on what we did during that time. But again, we didn't know what we were doing. We were taking the best advice we could at the time and trying to make the best decisions that we could make at the time. And each and every commissioner felt the exact same heat. And unfortunately, the community didn't see the time and effort that commissioners, including Commissioner Cruz and all the other commissioners, were going through to try and make absolute difficult decisions with so little information. No one had ever done this before. So that's what I know about Commissioner Cruz over the past four years. And I appreciate working with her, and I wish her the best in the future. Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if my light actually came on. Well, before I started here, I worked for Ascension via Christie and running for this seat in 2020. I'm glad that you guys are both mentioning COVID, because as a person who worked in the medical field, I just hope that you realize that everybody at both hospitals, that Wesley and Ascension, all of our medical partners and associations realized your leadership during that time. We saw that you were really fighting for, for the community that was taking care of the people who most needed it, and that was really appreciated. I don't know if you realize the impact that your words made on all of us who had to go into the hospital every day and just understanding the impact that made on us. So I hope, I hope that you take that with you, that you know how, how, how much that impacted all of us in such a great way, because it was an extremely hard time, and it still is. I mean, COVID's obviously still around, and, but we, we definitely saw you and appreciated the words that you had then. Also, when I was thinking about running for office one day, it was going to be 20 years from now. It wasn't going to be today. It wasn't going to be in 2020. It was not ever in my short-term goals until you planted that seed. And so I hope that you know, you know, you mentioned a lot of women that you've helped inspire to run. I hope that you continue to do that, and I hope that girls, your daughters, my daughters, their generation will continue to see that, and, and your work will have such long-lasting implications because of that. And I hope that you continue to do that. So the work that you've built on over these last four years, we're going to continue to do. I mean, everything that you've been talking about when it comes to mental health and all these other things are, are vital, that we continue to push those initiatives forward, and we still will. So your work will be felt for decades to come, and just really appreciate your service, not just to your district, but to our entire community, and just appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I've been, I've been thinking for a couple of weeks what I would say today, and there's a lot we could say. I'd like to just thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for your service to the county. Many of the things I wanted to say have already been said. I, I believe that Commissioner Dennis was right, and he says, "We take care of people." One thing I would say about you, Commissioner Cruz, is you have a true organic passion for disadvantaged people, for homeless, people struggling with homelessness, people struggling with substance abuse and mental health. Your service here has been inspiring. I think you've shifted the focus of the county. I always talk about four major parts of Sedgway County. We have public safety, it's always number one, infrastructure, quality of life, and then human services. I think that the county is now more focused on human services because of your service. As I've thought about District Four, maybe some people don't know this, but before 1986, we didn't have five districts. We only had five districts started in, in 1987. The very first year was '87. In fact, since then, we've had nine terms in Districts Four and Five. And Commissioner Cruz, you are the eighth person to serve in that seat. Four of those have been women. I think that you have inspired many people to think about running for office, and I appreciate that. I think it's a very good thing for the community to consider service to their community. to consider service to their community. I recognize that you were chosen by your district to represent them, 105,000 people. In fact, the county, we have about 526,000 people now, and in many things we do, we represent the entire county. This is a big job. It's incredibly interesting. It's incredibly complicated, but it's absolutely important. Commissioner Dennis mentioned 40 agencies. I would actually argue with him a little bit. I think we have a little more than 50, 50, if you count them differently. But at the end of the day, we have a lot of responsibility. And this is a very difficult job. And someone said already, but we may be on the, we may consider ourselves on the opposite ends of the political spectrum. It doesn't really matter because you know what? And I've been keeping track. We have agreed much more than we've disagreed. And I appreciate having you here on the commission. You have changed the conversation. You have challenged the status quo, and I think that's important. So with that, Commissioner Cruz wants to say thank you for your service.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. German. And lots been said. I want to again thank all the comments from the public. You all said some really great things and recognized a lot of avenues and venues that Commissioner Cruz has contributed to in our community. And Lacy, I wanted to go into some stuff, but so much has been said, and I don't want to detract from your, from your.
My long-winded speech?
It was, it was good. And I just congratulate, and our first year together, coming in, you were, it was so fun to meet you and understand. And she would lecture me about, I need to be more involved in social media, so I learned about social media from you. And, and we brought, we brought a lot of, I enjoyed our first year. And it's really unfortunate that Year Two and Three, COVID hit, and it just changed, it changed the world, and it changed. We all tried our best, as been referenced before. And, and I think coming out of Year Two and Three, Year Four, I think COVID exposed to everybody the, the mental health issues here locally and nationwide, and the homeless, and the loneliness that COVID created. And I think that allowed to shift, with your leadership, allowed to shift our focus to not only calling it our priority, but acting on it. And so for that, I thank your contribution for that. And Year Four was, was coming out of that. And then you throw in an election year, which is very distracting as a candidate, as you know, and as you referenced. So anyway, Bailey and Nova, thank you. I've enjoyed meeting you. Bailey, I'll probably see you at the next egg toss practice. So best of luck to you both in your future. You have a bright one ahead of you. And just thank you, Commissioner Cruz or Lacy. Just thanks for your service and thanks for the friendship. And I really wish you the best of luck. I'm sure you've got a bright future, so thank you.
I don't see any other comments. Again, on behalf of the entire County Commission, Commissioner Cruz, thank you very much for your service. The five people up here are really bound together in a lot of ways, honestly. We face a lot of tough decisions each and every day, and each one of us have to make our decisions based on what we truly believe is the right thing for the community at that time. We don't always agree. But if you go back and look at our record, probably better than 95% of our votes are 5-0 because our votes are to take care of people. And so I truly believe that you have to be able to work together in order to be able to take care of the people. So I don't see any other comments today. Before I adjourn, one thing that I would like to ask is that each time that, since I've been on the commission, that a commissioner has gone off the commission, we take a group photo of all five of the commissioners together for the final time. So I'd like to accomplish that before that we lose all five commissioners this morning. But again, thanks, everyone, for being here today. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. With that, we're adjourned.
We'll take those folders over to the office. We're going to stop this and make sure that we.